I was having my red car.
It's like Connie Graham.
No, it was my dog that we had to put down over there.
What's my name here?
Um, it was a rescue, but it was a really, really great dog. And we had him for four years.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a heart and brain.
Oh, it was horrendous. It was totally horrendous.
Seventy, seventy-five years, seventy-five years.
But this one was, um, he was thrown out of a car. He picked this information up from the Eastside Hamilton. Somebody crashed with that and threw away the vehicle. And somehow he found his way to his sister.
So Jeff, did you read any news?
And he had to live a whole very, very true winter.
Did you know about the parade?
And he got bored.
I did get a copy.
He loved to be in the car.
That's all right. It's, you've got rather.
And it somehow, I mean, not somewhat fine in any way.
Ninety-two D.
Our vet says, oh, you know, he's a, is about six to eight months old.
They'd be anywhere from one to fifty-one people or so.
Really?
How old was he when you looked at his?
And he gets delayed six to seven months old because, because he lost his teeth.
Oh, right, like eight.
They said that he would be fixed in.
I, I got a prior comment that's got me from eight till four forty-five.
When was it?
About two and a half years ago.
A little trouble on your shoulder.
Yes, yes, yes.
Greg, are you gonna be able to clean up day by chance?
I think you asked me that question, or was this happening?
And you were busy. I just thought if I asked in front of everybody else, it would pressure the kids.
No.
It's time.
Sorry.
I got therapeutics today for when I start coughing instead of Greg jumping out of water.
Are these ours?
Only for working on Saturday. There we go.
Don't let the young man for Saturday.
Can I sponsor somebody to work for me?
It can be yours. Just send a representative, but don't talk to the young man.
Do we know if David's gonna be here now? Yes, no? David, no. I don't know nothing. Okay. Go ahead. We'll not be here. That's not an obligation that's carried about the jurisdiction. So, well, it's close enough to seven o'clock. Let's begin. I'll call this meeting to order. Council work session made the two thousand twelve.
There he is.
And there's Mr. Adams. Could the clerk call the roll, please?
Adams?
Here.
Breeze?
Here.
Halter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Walterman? Merle?
Here. Uh, just let the record flag that Mr. Walterman, uh, came in this afternoon. He's out of jurisdiction. And my personal business, he won't be able to attend tonight's meeting. Uh, the, I guess the first order of business is update highlights of new zoning code. And I guess I'm gonna let you lead this discussion. Let me make the preface that most of the zoning code is the same as it was. Just cast in, um, I don't wanna say a different light, but it, 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 it's just kinda different.
More broadly organized.
Yeah, it's, it's better organized, um, you know, definitions are all in one place. And with that said, come on, come on, you can start.
I'll say a few things, but just to follow up to your comment, I'll, I'll go ahead and start with that. But based on some of the comments and input that I'm, I'm getting back on our, uh, on the public hearing, planning commission's public hearing tomorrow, I, I do think it's important for people to compare it with our existing code, uh, which is also online, has always been online, um, for any particular issues. You know, it's probably more looking back to see how, how do we board it right now. Because I, I live in one times out of ten, we're not even changing it in those particular areas. But I did receive from Todd Kinsky, they answered the meeting tomorrow, a couple of summaries that I thought would be helpful for council to take a look at. One is simply the sheet that, uh, should get this in front of me, the highlights of the new zoning code content. And then, uh, I, I think it's important too to know that when we first started out on this venture, they had done, uh, regional planning did an analysis of our existing zoning code. There had been, I certainly had looked at it and felt a total agreement, um, that our zoning code needed to be updated. I think the majority of the trade pack, there were some changes over time, but nothing of significance. So, um, that's why we had them start with that initial, um, review of our code and, and the items that they felt needed to be updated. And then as planning commission has, has gone along with their meetings, there have been other areas that have been points of discussion that, that were also addressed. But, uh, I'll, I'll leave the bigger one, the analysis of the existing code. You can take a look at that. But let's, if you want, we'll spend just a little time going through, um, as far as what, what he has looked at. You know, again, eliminating any deficiencies, conflicts, outdated concepts and terminology, changes needed to comply with state or federal statutes and to introduce changes needed to facilitate implementation of the Greenbelt Comprehensive Plan. And actually, the zoning rewrite was a recommendation of the plan, so it was kinda recognized for points in common. This was a step that we needed to underwrite. We are doing a comprehensive now, an entirely new ordinance, but I do realize that there are portions of the existing code, in particular the Greenbelt District, um, the cell tower regulations and the planned unit development. There are absolutely no changes being done to this at all. So, um, if you're reviewing that, it's, it's, it's existing content for those particular things. Some of the things, and if you looked at a list of the newer modified regulations, um, I know the mayor has spelled out some of these particularly in number four there, on some of the issues like urban agriculture, the home daycare, parking of boats, trailers, RVs. If you run down that list, those are probably some of the more significant in terms of probably affecting people on a day-to-day basis, what we might be looking at. The fences was a point of discussion at our last meeting. I guess the designation of the local historic district, that's an entirely new chapter that we'll have in code. Those, here's the ones. Obviously, there's some pieces here, but I'll just choose to highlight those right now. So I, I guess take a look at these before, if you intend to, to come to the public hearing tomorrow. And I do wanna just touch on the procedure, the processes I know with that. Planning Commission has been working through this document and have come up with a draft document, which is the one that's out there right now for everybody to review and comment. So that public hearing takes place tomorrow. Planning Commission will take comments from citizens and then have a meeting and will review those comments and, and come up with what they feel should be incorporated into that document, which they will then send to council with a recommendation. So then it comes to this body. You then set up a public hearing and go through the same public hearing comments, uh, process and take comments and sit down and talk about these comments and figure out what should be incorporated into the final document for your approval. So.
Okay. Trying to clear up the process.
Yeah, I just, a couple of questions on tomorrow night. As far as time limitations, are there any, is that up to the chair to make?
We propose the five minutes.
Oh, that's right, that's right. We did talk about that.
Yeah.
Five minutes per person.
And, um, the, the way it'll go is that Todd will, uh, address the changes. Todd's gonna, he'll have a presentation discussing what, you know, the changes are and what's a change and what's just a rearrangement. You know, if we, if we look down this thing, um, you know, section one, some changes. We're adding some regulations and definitions to control adult entertainment uses. Not that we have a particular issue with that at present, but we wanna make sure that we don't have an issue with it. And, you know, where they can be located now, et cetera, et cetera. The, you know, chapter two is the definitions business. He's added or consolidated the, uh, location of all the definitions. So if you need to understand what a particular word says in context of a thing, all definitions are in one place. And, and on it goes, um, and, you know, that there's a lot of stuff here, you know, the, um...
Yeah, we worked on it a long time.
Yeah, we've been at it a while, so, um, you know, appreciated to be all here to attend tomorrow night's meeting. Get a sense of things. Greg, please do, please do.
Who's part of the planning commission?
Glenn and myself, Judith Mullenhardt, Jessica Will singing, and Wes Noel. Other members of the planning commission.
Bond's ex officio.
Is that? Yeah, she's a sort of ex officio member.
And, um, how does the average citizen get a hold of the draft or?
It's on, it's on the website.
And it's also available here.
Yeah, it's on the website.
It, it's available in-house to ask some questions.
No, no, it is.
It's where it is.
Will then somebody from the commission be the one responsible for taking the comments?
Um, you know, I actually talked to Kathy if she could show me how to record to get this recorded.
Okay.
I'd probably use her.
Yeah, I would rather listen than sit there and be trying to making sure I got everybody's propositions in the right place.
Your recording device is probably gonna be a little bit easier than your telephone, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
We hope, we hope, we hope it's not a spy jam.
And if somebody has something that currently is non-conforming to what? If, if, let's, for hypothetical situations, say that nothing has changed from the draft. We, and we, it ends up being adopted exactly as it is. And suppose somebody has something that is not conforming to the new code once it's adopted. Is there any enforcement of an existing situation or is it, is this only for new situations? So if somebody has a fence in the front door.
Well, a non-conforming use prior to the adoption of the code remains grandfathered as a non-conforming use.
Okay. Well, I wanted to make sure that that was correct, my understanding was, because I think people need to understand that.
So put in simpler language for me. You're saying that it's not a grandfather clause and you would have to change the fence?
No, 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 that's precisely.
Oakmont.
It, it remains, um, it's grandfathered as a non-conforming use.
Okay.
But a change to that non-conforming use would have to require, um, you know, the adherence to the, the code as it's written.
So as signage and all that, it all can stay the same even if it's not meeting the new updated code? Correct.
Tell me which changes are.
Okay.
That's why I wouldn't, what's it called?
Chumby.
Grand view? They wanted us to sit there and keep that sign. Well, the new code will save the sign down. It's usually when I change it and use it.
Okay.
So about that.
And that's a legal reason, right? I mean, it's not like you can make people shift things and do things.
Yeah, I mean, for example, if, um, if somebody's got a non-conforming, uh, like an outbuilding that doesn't conform with the, I mean, it, it meets the letter, the old offset requirements, which some crazy formula, um, in, in a lot of it. And if it met that, but it doesn't meet the new one, uh, they don't have to tear down a new building. If they were to put up a new building, then they go.
I had a functional, um, suggestion, and it might already happen. I haven't looked at the draft on, online. But it wouldn't take much to put the new information in a different color so that people weren't digging around and going, okay, 1.5, where does that new information start? Where's the old information start? I, I can do that for you.
That's a great idea.
Because.
Or highlighter.
Yeah, I guess.
That makes a hundred and some odd changes.
All I have to do is go to these points, select them, change the color, so.
First, that is not how we got the draft from planning, although we've re, each time we've reviewed a draft, they highlighted them. But I got the impression that the purpose was to present an entirely new code. So that's why it's all one, you know, it's not.
Yeah, but I mean, what's, what's different, I guess, you know? What Jeff is looking at is like, what, what's different?
Even if it was a different font.
Well, and, well, the, well, even that's more, it would be easier and more.
Color.
Color would do it. The only reason I say that is I hate to have our time spent tomorrow night, even anytime, wrestling where stuff begins and ends. If you can simply see where changes have happened, it would expedite things in my opinion.
Don't the highlights here do it? I mean, if we just pass that out or attach that to the.
But this is a, this is a top line, I understand, right? This isn't the whole wording, or is it?
No, that's not the whole wording though.
No.
No, I mean, whole wording as far as, uh, the changes go. This is just.
No, this is just the, the titles of it, so.
Right.
Good. I don't know how that will affect tomorrow night's meeting.
It might not, but even if somebody is, we follow down the roster.
But ongoing it could. I consider that'd be very, that'd be a useful thing.
Okay. And I can help you do that. Okay, mush. Thanks.
She's raising her hand.
You're a danger.
All right, then.
Um, what, I have many concerns, but the one right now, when you mentioned about the grandfather and how does a person prove that that fence was there, that they need to have to take a picture and date it or something like that? Because this is unusual part of the law. You are guilty of innocent in this particular situation, which means that you may have to take it to court and prove that a non-conforming use was prior to the date of adoption. How does a person feel, uh, that's very secure?
I don't know. You'd have to ask Mr. Kinsky that question. I don't know how one would. Of course, you can document what exists on a particular day. I mean, you're always, oh, you're always free to do that.
Okay.
You know, I think most of the changes though, that, um, that would come into conflict with any changes in the zoning code would require review by, uh, the building official or issuance of a permit. So if you're gonna go do something that requires a permit, that.
Well, I'm concerned that somebody will tell the person, this has to go, and the person will have to come up to court and prove that it was non-conformant prior to that date.
But continue with the mayor's saying though, that at the time the fence was put up, there, something would have been issued. So that it, we could look in the file and see if we have something for it.
And I'm not sure we have an alternative, because I would think that everybody that updates their zoning code would have to be similar in.
Yeah, everybody, I mean, this isn't.
Right, so we don't have an option. Our only option would be to not update it at all.
We took that option for about thirty-six years.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, I'm not sure that we got a Plan C in that mix, right?
No, I, I don't think there's, uh, I mean, that's, that seems to be the only reasonable way of dealing with it. And again, Mr. Kinsky can probably enlighten us on what has happened in other communities, 'cause I'm sure he's been, um, down this street before.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding, um, changes or analysis there? All right. Managers' updates then.
Okay, I have a number of updates, um, a couple renewals coming up. First, this fall, we will have, um, an additional levy renewal up, um, on the November ballot. This one is for current upgrading expenses and those last year's. It's in two parts. This is a 3.89 mil. It, it generates about 185,000 a year for us.
This is not an old levy, right?
It's, it would be a renewal.
But it's, but it's not an old, old one.
Um, yeah.
It was originally between that one, it was originally for the?
No, I, I wanted to guess 1976, but he didn't bring that sheet up with me, but I will be able to tell you by the inflationary figures.
How many mils again?
Three point.
3.89. Um, so this will require two pieces of legislation, and I will have this on the finance committee, um, agenda next week. The first piece is the one where we put our scenario to the auditor and ask them to certify back to us what that would generate for us in terms of the mileage. Then once that comes back, we do, um, a second piece of legislation where you would actually be agreeing to include it on the ballot. So it'll be a two-part process over, um, the next two months. And they have changed the deadline for getting it down to the board of elections. It was seventy-five days and now it's a ninety days. So you have to do it a little bit sooner than we would have done.
Needs to be down there August sixth, right?
All right.
The other renewal I have in your packet, uh, is actually our healthcare. And this is, this is another one that typically really can never go without an emergency clause, because, um, bids are only put out by the, composes are only put out by the insurance companies a certain period of time ahead of, uh, when we actually renew. And we're at August first renewal. So what I have, uh, given you tonight is the actual timeframe. We had our initial meeting with the rand. Right now, we have the easy app, online process going on with our employees for them to update their, um, their own information. And once that's received, they'll send it out to the carriers to give them a minute. So, um, we will not have anything to counsel on this, I believe, until July for approval, um, to go into effect on August first. So feel free to review that. Let me know if you have any questions.
How many employees do we have on our?
Uh, I believe we have, uh, twelve. Oh, it's a small group.
Yeah.
Very small group. You have any questions? Okay, I've also given you a copy of a, uh, post layout for a soccer field. This would be a temporary soccer field.
Yeah.
And it's at the corner of Drummond and Damon, just back from Lincoln. This is property that we own that right now we're not utilizing, although it's intended to hopefully maybe be part of the development site. But in the interim, um, we've had a request to use it for a, is this a peewee?
Mm-hmm.
A peewee of a field. So I wanted you to see that layout, be aware of it, and if you have any issues or concerns.
Yeah, it's a smaller soccer field. The first year.
So it's, I guess, there, would any trees have to be removed?
No. You can see that the oak trees that were towards the street were, the setback will be over a hundred foot from our, the right of way. There's an existing stand area that's outside the line, kind of outlined the area. Jason Culbison, they've done this, we cut it for him and he had it out. The only thing that would be, there's an existing cable TV thing, but I think it's recessed and absolutely shouldn't be bothering the kids. From Drummond, it's, looks forty-three foot from the right of way.
So it's not a safety issue from the kid's standpoint?
Yeah.
There's a little bit of fire down into the.
Exactly, 'cause, 'cause even from before the, um, oak trees, the terrain actually goes up. It rises up about three or four foot. So what these, these first time, they're not gonna pick the ball. They're like little.
Oh, yeah.
Little mud balls are all get together and then pop and just pop down.
Yeah, origin of that.
Yeah. It's not gonna be passers or something.
So, I mean, do you need any action or do you just?
Um, well, I was, I was gonna talk about it with the, uh, tomorrow night for the recommission, because there are some areas of concern as far as filling in, seating and strolling and, uh, kinda leveling off. There's some low spots. And, um, we were always gonna have a landscaper just take a look at it. It's not gonna be, as a matter of fact, the landscaper's gonna look at it as one of his children involved with the sport. And he was gonna do it for next stop. And I said, well, just let me know what the cost is. I was gonna ask the commission if we could, you know, donate that money from our, our levy money, just to help them out, just so nobody has to come out of pocket with their own cash. I think it'd be kinda neat, 'cause if what the plan would be then, over on Palma, we're gonna make a passers field as opposed to for, like, the next two years after that. And we can make passers field without doing any changing at all. But we got, we got a whole heck of a lot more depth than we have enough width, so that way they can update that area for passers.
Right now it's two peewees.
Yes. Well, just one. We were thinking about putting two in. But if we do, then we got the terrain moved down a lot, a lot of fill we have to come in. So this was seen, uh, Jason came up with this idea and I, I thought it was awesome. You know, it's not being used. It's, he knows it's temporary, you know, until some such time that, you know, we do have some kind of building going out there.
It shows some activity as well, I think, for folks who are driving on Winthrop.
And both on Palmer and.
And with their family, I think.
Okay, um, the only other thing is the, I want to give you an update on the community development block grant, because it has been a little bit past the usual timeframe for getting agreements. Um, I did learn this week that we would probably have our agreement for your table by end of this month. Lauren, just front of you.
All right.
Can we ask you a question?
Sure. Questions?
So we're gonna be open for everyone tomorrow late at weekend?
Yes, it is on twenty-sixth.
Okay, and how's that going with the new management group and our people today?
Things are going well. Um, and actually, we just learned yesterday that the Gators did agree to run concessions. So we're very excited about that.
Good for them. And then, um, also back to your presentation last week.
Oh, thank you. Um, I had to go to the Alton County Development Company last week to, um, make a presentation on our request for funding to do the base tour of our investment, as best as serving the shopping center, signed to try and keep that moving forward. So, um, I do think it went well. The one issue they were a little concerned about is, um, the fact that it's in a historic district. But I just tried to stress to you, don't we need this information regardless? And no matter what happens at that site, anybody who buys that is gonna need these informations.
Oh, yeah.
Haven't heard yet, but I'm sure very soon.
But who's the, um, decision makers there for that?
Uh, they actually have a board for certain, is that what you probably make it's called?
Yeah.
You laugh. It's what we all do. Uh, so they have a board made up of like a board of boardy commissioners there represented to, um, to oversee the company, which represented just a boy and.
Okay.
Uh, should I say or something?
Any other questions for the manager?
No.
Does that look, you got some?
You look at that corner of the aisle.
Anyone have any other business to bring to the board now?
I just wanted to show what the good for community development. We're going to put some signs up.
We can call it Green Hills.
Call it Green Hills.
All right.
And kind of corral people down, point them to where, wherever they need to go. We wanna make sure that they're on our property, so we need our code. And, uh, and the idea, I've, I've stopped down there a number of times and there's a lot of people, I guess, that aren't unaware of our golf course, so we wanna make them aware. I'm thinking that we might, if weather's favorable, it doesn't make sense to put up in rain. I don't know if they would, I think we should put them up like a Thursday, Monday or Thursday through the weekend if it's looking like a nice weekend and then pull them back in. I don't, I think they should be up desperately. But just to get people to say, oh, we're punctual. Did you change that sign?
I think you did.
I was complaining that it did exactly meet my original design.
He changed.
But I couldn't beat the price, so.
All right. So now they clean up. If you can't be there, Greg, some warm bodies.
Yes, and we are in need of adults, adult, adults that will supervise about ten students. And you get a T-shirt so they know who you are and get to take it home, wear it properly. And this is the Global Academy Design, but we put it on a different color to identify a leader of the students. We need at the gazebo, nine to noon. We already have gloves, we have garbage bags, we're gonna be recycling. You can also pick up, um, work it out that you can pick up a recycling bin there. There'll be other information about, you know, that front and a couple of tables. We'll have, have a good time, pick some things up.
About three o'clock?
Uh, nine o'clock, I think, gazebo.
Until?
And if you, and if you can't make it, you might be able to know another adult that could step in and do that. That would be great.
I think nine till noon is the plan.
As a matter of fact, I, I know what Amy, our exchange student from Germany, she came at my daughter's wedding. She's gonna be here the rest of the week on Saturday.
She can take my place.
She actually went to Global Studies and gave a talk.
Oh, did she?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
She can take my place.
I'll let you work that out, but thank you.
All right. See, um...
Very negligent.
Is there anything else?
Very negligent not to mention the cleanup day thing.
Yes, I.
I got your back, buddy.
All right.
That's, that's the true meaning of backup.
I mean, I flipped it, I flipped it all day and long again, then.
Yeah, yeah. Um, just a reminder, the American Legion's having their Memorial Day thing, on Memorial Day.
Their thing.
Their thing. At ten o'clock, is that right? Is that when, when the, uh, the event starts on Commons?
What, at ten?
You can create now to, might be nine thirty.
Yeah, I thought it was around there.
And then create lots of comments.
Some of the Boy Scouts are in, I think, I was due there like eight thirty, eight thirty. That's all I will just say, we're there, so we're. Yeah, uh, but, I mean, the, the Legionnaires are gonna be busy, they start at dawn. Uh, they do a couple of ceremonies at, uh, at some of the old military cemeteries that are around. Do you know the one, the one over, I think there's this Smiley Cemetery, maybe there's one over in Corray Township, uh, that they go to, they, they do a short ceremony. And they'll do their typical, um, parade down, uh, Winrow, their, their quiet parade, and then there'll be, uh, speeches and band playing and a twenty-one gun salute, and, and on you go. Later that day after the year, it's life. So, anyhow, that's that story, so we'll see you all there. And if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
There's second.
Second.
There's no objection, stand adjourned.